Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, city staff, invited guests. Welcome to our council meeting here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm now going to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence and afterwards, the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will ask my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of city council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have the minutes, and we have a minutes of a called meeting on June 25th, 2024, and a regular meeting on June 25th, 2024. Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Please vote electronically. Mr. Moody? Thank you, sir.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you please read the council rules for speakers?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a green light here, beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order, not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. Our first public hearing, item 24-194, item AUP-24-04. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this public hearing item?
Yes, sir. The item you're handling is resolution granting the request of Matt Mater, I'm sorry, and Ken Rodman for a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on approximately 30.2 acre parcel located at Zero Coast Guard Boulevard in the industrial zoning district. The property is owned by the Virginia Holding Corporation. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial use. The planning commission recommends approval with conditions. The actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit UP 2404 to Matt Mater and Ken Rodman to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard at Zero Coast Guard Boulevard."
Thank you, ma'am. Are the applicants here? If you would please come forward, sirs, state your name and address, and you will have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Distinguished Councilman. My name is Ken Rodman. I work for VHB. Address is 4500 Main Street, Suite 400, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23462. I'm the project manager of the civil engineering firm for the project. As stated in the application, the property is currently zoned industrial for heavy industrial use. We are proposing a container stacking and chassis yard for approximately 307 spaces. The property is 30.2 acres, 10.8 of which we are using for the development. The project as laid out completely avoids the wetlands that are on the property as well as completely stays out of the resource protection area. Do we have the drawing that can be pulled up? Do I do that? Going to use my time to get educated. There we go.
You OK, sir?
I am fine, thank you.
Very good.
I now know where I am.
Yes, sir.
As the site is currently laid out, we have three entrances onto Coast Guard Boulevard, two for the larger part of the use of the property on the north side, and one for the smaller piece on the south side. The wetland and the RPA buffer, as it has currently been delineated and approved, sort of bifurcates the property, forcing us to have sort of two separate yards. The entire perimeter is going to be security fenced and monitored. We met with the city early on with the project before submitting our application, and at the city's direction, we were asked to perform a traffic impact analysis report. We went out and did appropriate counts while schools were still in session to capture the most volume applicable. And the good news is that this project, due to its proximity of the main gate at the Virginia International Gateway, really the trucks don't really have to get on Western Freeway or College Drive to get from VIG onto this site. So it really does not impact the neighboring streets, and the traffic impact analysis supported that. The other thing this will do is hopefully will potentially remove some of the trucks that currently use Wild Duck Lane as a stacking area outside of VIG. If you've ever driven down the Western Freeway and seen the trucks sort of stacked up there waiting for their turn, if they have a place like this that they can go to and park their trailer while they're waiting their turn, that's a huge benefit to the community to get those trucks off the road. Early on during when we met with the city, they asked that we meet with the Coast Guard since they are an important neighbor of ours on this site. We held those meetings with the Coast Guard, listened to their concerns. We found out when their orders of operation, when the most cars are coming in and out so that we could try to capture those when we did our traffic counts and incorporated their information into our traffic study. Subsequently, when we presented to the planning commission, I misstated and said that we had the Coast Guard's support of the project due to our early meeting. We have since met with the Coast Guard multiple times, virtually through Teams calls, to try to address their main concerns with security and access. And if you see this layout compared to what we previously submitted, we made a few adjustments to help address some of the Coast Guard concerns. We've added a left turn lane, while it was not warranted by the traffic study, we added a left turn lane on Coast Guard Boulevard at the northernmost entrance just because if any trucks that are going to access facility, we didn't want trucks using one of the two lanes to impede traffic flow going on and off off the base. So by creating a separate left turn lane, we get the trucks out of the through lane so through traffic can access the main, the base gate. We also, in talking with them, have offered up a secondary emergency access, which is to the northernmost piece. Does this actually have a point or two? It does. So right there, we offer a secondary access that they can use and maintain security control of. In doing so, we pulled our security fence further back, we pulled our development further back, reduced the number of spaces we have on our site to provide them a secondary access so that if anything happens at their main gate, they have a second way of getting vehicles in and out of the base, which seemed to be fairly important to them. So while I wouldn't characterize that we have the Coast Guard's full support, I believe you guys have since received a letter that explained our ongoing coordination with them, and we look forward to continuing that coordination as we develop the site plan pending an approval of tonight's conditional use permit. And lastly, we have coordinated with Brian Donahue and the Department of Economic Development throughout our process in keeping Brian and his staff apprised of what we have going on here. Anytime there's new development in the city, we try to keep Mr. Donahue and his department apprised so that economic development is, you know, walking along with us in the process and are informed of potential economic development projects within the city. Still have four minutes left. I'm here to answer any of your questions, but with that, I'm going to close my remarks.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the brief, Mr. Rodman. I was attending the planning commission meeting that you referred to and appreciate the work that you've done in collaboration with the Coast Guard Base Portsmouth. We did get the letter that you referred to, and Captain Dewey points out in the letter that the continuing work to solve the access questions, the security questions, and the explosive arc concern that he had are all being worked through and addressed. And so my hope is that that cooperation continues to ensure that you all are good neighbors with the Coast Guard Base next door. So thanks for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
So far in that regard.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rodman, thank you for the presentation. I see in the report that it will accommodate 310, is that the truck?
It's 307 now. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I guess that's appropriate for the number of trucks that we see coming through. And does that account for, I mean, does the driver has to stay with that truck the whole time, or can they leave and take a break or go someplace else, or do they have to?
They can leave. It's more for a trailer drop.
Okay.
The trailer can sit there, they can take their truck and leave the facility, but it's more for a trailer drop or a container stack.
I think it's a great idea. I don't know if this is being replicated across the region or the nation, but great ideas, so applaud you.
One thing we've learned particularly during COVID is that we really don't have enough trailer parking throughout Hampton Roads. And you can drive throughout, you know, Portsmouth and Chesapeake and Suffolk, and you can find trucks parked on the side of the road everywhere, right?
Exactly.
So we are currently working on multiple projects for this very type of thing, for the very reason of trying to get the trucks from just parking on our roadways. And this one being right outside of the Virginia International Gateway, it's an ideal location for what its use is.
Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Rodman, does that conclude your comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and you are not required to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing item. If you come forward and speak on this public hearing item, we ask that you state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mike Fink speaking. I live in Churchland. I didn't hear the gentleman say how many containers would have hazardous material on it, what they would do with hazardous material if nobody was there. I also didn't hear how many times that tractor and trailer is going to start up in the middle of the night in neighborhoods right there. I hadn't heard anybody say anything about it. I don't have a lot of faith in the planning commission here, so I don't mind telling you, I'm kind of biased against that. It might be a nice idea, but nobody asked some questions. You wouldn't want to live next door to that. I know I wouldn't. Our fire department can't handle hazardous material. We'd need special equipment to sit here or call from Norfolk, which is our brother city, or Chesapeake, that has what Portsmouth should have. So I wish you'd ride by and look how many cars you got to pass and how many times you start their trucks up at night. And one other question, what kind of money do they make doing this? I mean, how does the city get any revenue from this? Bring a container in, set it down, come back tomorrow and get it? Do you charge per container? You know, you don't have a service station there, this fellow didn't buy fuel there, so he just, all he's doing is like renting the facility on our dime. I think it'd be used for something a little different, I don't know what, but I'm sure you could find something. Put a park there, that's all I can say. It's a waste of money, and there's a lot of hazardous involved. I've been in business 48 years towing, I know what's in them, and they won't let us open some of them up when they turn over. So I don't mean that something ain't going to turn over there. But anyway, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fink, I think raises some legitimate questions. Can the presenter speak to the manner in which hazardous materials and containers are handled, as well as any noise that could possibly come from the site?
Well, to address the first concern about the containers, majority of the containers that use a facility like this come out of the port, they're empty, and they just sit until they get reloaded to get shipped back to whatever country their destination was so that we're not going to be storing hazardous materials on this site. So I'd like to lay that fear. And the other one was the noise. The VIG has its hours of operation, right, which you would be, you would think would be consistent with this. So if, for instance, the gate is open at seven and shuts at five in the evening, then it would be similar to what we would have here because you wouldn't have traffic coming on and off, you know, integrating with the port itself, you know, outside of the hours of operation of the port. So I don't think there would be a noise concern. We really don't have any adjacent neighbors to speak of, so we still think it's the best use for the property.
Thank you. We do have a speaker, Mr. Chris Gullikson. Chris, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. My name is Chris Gullikson, Director of Development and Transportation Policy at the Port of Virginia. My business address is 101 West Main Street, Suite 600, Norfolk, Virginia, 23510. I first want to say thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, as I come before you tonight, to voice support for this use permit to operate a shipping container and chassis storage yard at Zero Coast Guard Boulevard. I also want to take a moment just to recognize city staff, city planning staff. They have been very professional, they've been thorough, they've been accessible during this entire application process. The Port of Virginia has experienced record container volume growth in the recent years. While we continue to maintain strong operational excellence, we are earning and preserving new business daily. First, let me tell you, this growth that we've achieved over the past few years would not by any means have been accessible or achievable if it hadn't been for the expansions that have taken place there at Virginia International Gateway in Portsmouth. In addition to the expansions at VIG, the port is undertaking a $1.4 billion capital improvement program as we speak. This program includes the widening and deepening of our shipping channels to allow for the two-way transit of the ultra-large container vessels, which we so often see there at VIG. This is really also accommodating the ongoing shift we're seeing from a commercial perspective as freight and the global supply chains are moving freight from west coast ports to east coast ports. Along with the growing trends in e-commerce and reshoring of manufacturing, this is all activity which is generating significant outside-the-gate interest. And in particular, it's also creating a need for high-quality supply chain support facilities, like what's being proposed here tonight by Enlight. This project will enhance the continuity and movement of international freight into domestic supply chains. It will also be able to leverage what is a very strategic location just adjacent to VIG. The project will also, I believe, add an elevated amount of resiliency, which is so critical when we think of the supply chain at times of COVID, of course, and the tragic events that we witnessed in Baltimore. That resiliency in the supply chain is so critical, and our port, the Port of Virginia here in Portsmouth, has been a big part of keeping that supply chain moving. Through this process, I can tell you, Enlight, they've been responsive, they've been engaged with city staff, as well as with adjacent property owners, which has been mentioned, with the Coast Guard. I tell you, the city of Portsmouth commands this type of development and this type of investment tied to maritime and distribution and supply chain industry. So again, I just want to stress, the Port of Virginia, we just asked the city of Portsmouth to please just truly consider this opportunity. We're poised for this future continued growth, and so I just ask for your support on this use permit and for your approval. So again, thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing item can come forward and do so. You are not required to have signed up for this public hearing item. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We will now move to a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm just curious, do we have any indication of what the tax revenue would be with the property being approved from the present state?
Manager Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, I don't have that answer readily available for you, but I can absolutely get it for you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Our next item, item B, UP-24-05. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, the item, resolution granting the request of Kenneth Rodriguez Castro for a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall on approximately 0.56 acre parcel located at 465 Dinwiddie Street in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district. The property is owned by Patricia Woodard. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown use. Planning commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit UP 2405 to Kenneth Rodriguez Castro to operate an event space banquet hall at 465 Dinwiddie Street."
Thank you, ma'am. This is the applicant present. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, members of the city council. Our address is 465 Dinwiddie Street, Portsmouth, VA. I'm going to read a quick statement just to stay on track. Like I said before, my name is Kenneth Rodriguez Castro, and I am here to represent myself, my wife Olivia Lohman, and our business BIRU Event Space. Our use permit request for 465 Dinwiddie Street stems from a place of discovery. As new business owners, we recently purchased the location at 465 and have been navigating and learning the learning curve for commercial real estate ownership. We were surprised to learn that despite the building being zoned mixed-use, we still need a use permit to operate our business. Our vision for BIRU Event Space is to operate or is to become a premier event location in Portsmouth. By leveraging our expertise in event planning and the unique charm of the town, we aim to create a desirable destination for the local community and visitors from nearby cities. Here, they can experience the historic streets of downtown and old town Portsmouth. With the building being zoned T5, we believe our business is well-suited for the mixed-use that is located at. We offer a range of packages tailored to our clients' needs. These packages are the basic, premier, and the deluxe package, with each offering various services and amenities at different price points. Our revenue will primarily come from event planning fees, venue rental, supplementary income from add-on services such as decor enhancements, audiovisual equipment rentals. By customizing our packages and providing a blank canvas for our clients to create their dream event, we ensure a personalized, unique experience. We plan to target customers in Hampton Roads areas, including small to mid-sized companies for meetings and gatherings, as well as families and local communities seeking event venues. Our primary focus will be micro weddings, community workshops, baby showers, networking events, sweet 16 parties, youth programs, holiday celebrations, anniversaries, and many more other activities. We strive to cater to a diverse range of customers to provide them with exceptional event experiences tailored to their specific needs. We are committed to ensuring that our use of the space will not create any unreasonable environmental aspects such as odor, smoke, vibration, heat, or glare. Additionally, noise from our establishment will comply with the city code regarding unlawful excessive sound. To perform, to further mitigate any noise concerns, our building would include a soundproofed entryway. One of the main goals, one of our main goals is to build a solid reputation for delivering exceptional service and unforgettable experiences here in Portsmouth. We strive to consistently exceed our clients' expectations by providing top-notch event planning expertise, attention to detail, flexibility, and tailoring their packages with our customers. Additionally, we aim to cultivate long-term relationships with the clients as well as network with local vendors and partner with people in the industry. Thank you for your time and consideration. Just to finish off, I kind of want to briefly explain who we are. Myself, Kenneth Rodriguez, I've been here, we've been here for about eight years. I'm still active-duty Navy, will be getting out in the next few months, so I'll be dedicating all of my time and effort into this business. Hopefully, my wife, she's also been here, she's, her background is kindergarten teacher, and obviously, you know, we feel that we share a common goal, which is community and service. So, you know, hopefully with a yes from you guys, we can continue that in Portsmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Well, I do have a couple of questions. I noticed your hours of operation are from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., so that's 12 after midnight, is that correct? 12 a.m.?
12:00 midnight, correct.
12:00 midnight, okay.
Midnight, correct, yeah. We decided to not do 2 a.m. Our target audience is not a club scene. Honestly, it's more of a family-friendly location for any birthday parties, any retirement parties, graduations. We see that normally ends around midnight, so we didn't want to extend, obviously for two reasons. On one, our target audience is not that, and we're trying to be mindful to the community as well.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez and wife Castro for the presentation. I was looking through, I didn't see how many, what's the capacity that can be in that space?
Yeah, so we actually have, we still haven't gotten the certificate of occupancy. We were looking, we're hoping to get that soon. The current number that we got, and I believe it was based on the application that was discussed in the previous, it was 49 to 50, so 50. We were going to speak with the people from the certificate of occupancy because we believe that the space is, the way we, it was a vacant space. It was vacant, and we have rehabbed it, and it is just open space. So we believe we can fit safely about 65, 60 people in there. So obviously, we're not the experts in that field, we'll speak to the people that do that.
It looks beautiful.
Thank you.
And when people, people need space like this all across our city, and I think this is going to be a much-used space. And people find a way to park, but you didn't have to have any required parking?
I can speak to that. So no, T5, it does not require parking. However, we, parking's semi-available, we understand how downtown works, but there is the Midstreet parking garage, a block and a half away. So we are going to target heavily in our websites and our emails with our clients, and we're going to have maps and all of that to direct them to the parking garage as well. That's going to be our biggest push, is to tell them that we have parking available at the Middle Street parking garage.
Great. Well, congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations.
Thank you.
My question, though, is to staff, did we get any negative feedback from any of the notifications that went out to the community to include the, I think, the church and the neighborhood?
Dr. Russell, you have the floor, ma'am.
Councilman Moody, we did not receive any negative comments.
Thank you.
I'm having multiple conversations, excuse me. Thank you very much. Thank you all both, and thank you again for your service, sir.
Thank you.
This isn't, this is a public hearing on the use permit item. If anyone wishes to come speak on this item, if you would please come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. We are, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
Just a second, we're a little frozen.
Just a second, we're a little frozen, okay? We're unfrozen. Please vote electronically. Just a second, we're a little frozen, okay, we're unfrozen, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Our next item, item C, U P dash twenty-four dash zero six, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of Phil Paul Chitterer, I said it wrong, did I? Okay, great, of AES Consulting on behalf of CSX Transportation, Inc. for a use permit for a shipping container chassis storage yard on approximately seven point zero four acre portion of ninety-six point five acre parcel at Zero Sawyer Road. The property is currently zoned heavy industrial. The property is owned by CSX Transportation, Inc. and is further described as irregularly-shaped parcel bounded to the north by an existing CSX Railway bounded south by fourteen-twenty and fourteen-hundred Columbus Avenue, located east of northern Dead End of South Street and west of Martin Luther King Junior Freeway. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions and the actual resolution, a resolution granting a use permit, U P twenty-four zero six, to Paul Chitterer, to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on a seven point zero four acre portion of the ninety-six point five acre parcel, having an address of Zero Sawyer Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I've just got to say to you, Mr. Chitterer?
I'm actually representing for CSX on, on behalf of Paul T.
Okay, okay, did we pronounce that right? Well, the clerk gave me a good guide, so thank you, Madam Clerk. In any event, I assume you guys are the applicant?
Yes, sir.
So if you would state your name and address, you will have ten minutes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilors, I am Randy Markets.
Could you please bring the microphone closer to your mouth?
Uh, better, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I am Randy Markets, Director of State Relations for CSX Transportation. My business address is forty-nine hundred Old Osborne Turnpike in Richmond, Virginia, two-three-two-three-one. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly share some information about our use permit application and your consideration of this request. CSX is proposing to convert seven of our ninety-six acres parcel for an empty shipping container and trailer chassis storage yard, which will provide necessary additional storage space for transportation companies that support the area's intermodal network. This is the same use as the first application that you guys considered today. The site currently consists of vacant and overgrown gravel laydown areas, which will be demolished and resurfaced to accommodate the new outdoor storage yard. The developed storage area on the east side of the property will remain to be incorporated into the new storage yard. Primary items stored here, we expect to be unused trailer chassis, there will be no employees on site, trucks will arrive to either drop off or pick up trailers. CSX will manage operations of the site post constructions through stipulated lease agreements with tenants. We will also periodically inspect the property and ongoing operations for compliance with lease agreements and to observe site conditions, and the CSX Regional Railroad Police can perform periodic inspection and surveillance of the site. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial uses, which the storage yard does fit those designations. This, approximately two hundred spaces is what we're looking at here. There is no hazardous materials, these are all empty containers, and at the Planning Commission meeting, our neighbor to the west, Murro Chemical, I had a couple of concerns, we, a couple of changes from the proposed plan to the, to the, to the final site plan, did want to note for, for the council, we increased the height of the fence from six to eight feet, and addressed two concerns of Mr. Auerbach from Murro Chemical related to, to provide additional signage at the interest of the yard and restricted access signage at the interests, so that he was concerned that trucks would go through and turn around on his property. Also, that we removed five spaces from the southeast corner of the property, which is adjacent to a storage tank on his property to provide additional setback from that. There will be no flammables or no hazmats on site, so that wasn't, that wasn't, we just wanted to do that to accommodate his concerns. So those, that's, those are, those are the highlights. We want to thank the Planning Commission staff, they were very helpful for helping lead us down the path here to get to what we hope is a good solution, that my colleagues, Paul T. and Matt, will answer anything that is more technical in, in nature for you, but we thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council for your considerations even.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions from our colleagues on council? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, can you show the previous slide? So, so on the east side of Martin Luther King Freeway, the land that's there, that's all CSX property?
Everything in the red there, then, our property goes north of the tracks from there, that, I hope I'm not wrong on this, but the, the seven acres that we're developing is the extent of our property south of the tracks.
Okay, so on the east, but on the east side, that's where your property line ends with a longer rectangular shape?
Yes, sir, where that red line ends.
So, right, so the property that is highlighted, as it presently looks, is in a, is in unsightly condition, and so this is going to be a significant improvement. I was just, I just want to make sure that that's covering that whole area.
Yeah, that whole area there, that it's, it, it looks better from the aerial than it does on the ground. It, it is overgrown and it is unsightly, it's probably fair for the way it looks now, so it will be improved and will look like a normal parking facility, yes, sir.
Okay, now that parcel that's not highlighted to the right there, that's not your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugo, did you have a question for the applicant?
Thanks for your presentation. I don't recall the Plan Commission asking, and I don't see it in the package, was there traffic impacts done, and are you using city streets or the interstate between the port and, and your storage?
There was a traffic impact study, I gotta, Paul, support me if I get anything wrong here, the, the city did do a, a study and found no meaningful or significant impacts. It would be accessed from south of Columbus, not from M L K. or any of the other interstates.
Paul Chitterer, AES Consulting Engineers, address is fifty-two forty-eight Old Town Road, Williamsburg, Virginia. Just as, just as was said, these will be, from the port to this location, access through city streets, and there was an I T E. performed, that we, we performed it and submitted it to the, to the city for analysis as well, or acceptance, and it, the analysis indicated that we'd have about fifty-five peak vehicle trips per day on a weekday, and about nine on the weekends at a, at a peak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, you can take your seats at this time. This is a public hearing, if you wish to come and speak to this public hearing item, you're not required to have signed up. Come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This question is for the staff, if this is the location that I'm thinking, the access to the highway, is that off of High Street and London Boulevard?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Dr. Russell, can you provide a response to that?
I, I'm not sure, I'm gonna, my, my, I don't think so.
To get, to get on the Martin Luther King Expressway, that's, that's the new High Street entrance to go, what, east, and then to go back to the port, you have to get on to London Boulevard to get on to M L K. if I'm, if that's the area I'm thinking.
I'm gonna have to defer to the engineer, Dr. Whitaker, I, I don't know.
Mayor Glover, may I defer to Mr. Donahue, who's more familiar with the area?
I would defer to Mr. Carter, and then he can direct that.
Okay.
Absolutely, Brian, but if you have an answer, please help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I'm going to do my best, I think, to address the, the question. In terms of accessing the site from the Martin Luther King Freeway or I two sixty-four, High Street would be one point of access for that, and that would be four points to the south and west and east connecting to two sixty-four. Heading north, that would be at your London Boulevard on-ramp, and that would provide connection to the P M T. Terminal as well as V I G.
Right, right. My, my concern that, I hope that is taken into account is that you have I C. Norcom High School there, and you have heavy traffic in the morning, and so I'm just curious, has that been taken into account with how that site would be operated in, in the morning with the school traffic, walkers that will be along those streets, and that's going to be a heavily-traveled area with large trucks, so that's why I was curious about that entrance.
Good question, I would have to defer to the engineer and their traffic impact analysis on that, that would be something I think they would have looked at as part of those trips that would have been generated.
I would, I would hope that there would be some type of traffic control from that site in the mornings, given that that's a school area along there, and you have buses, and you also have persons walking.
Dr. Russell, do you have anybody that can respond to, Councilman Whitaker?
I believe the engineer, but the peak hour trips, which would be your A M. and P M. peak hour, the number was fifty-five, and that number would influence the recommendations for traffic control measures, and so the study does not recommend that, and I'm going to defer further to the engineer for a response, if that's okay.
You said fifty-five?
Fifty, the total number of peak hour trips from the traffic impact analysis was fifty-five.
Okay, yeah.
I would do fifty-five for the day, not for the hours. Fifty-five for a week during, during, during the weekdays.
Right.
For the full day.
I, my, my question is really not for them, it's more on what the city would be required, because like I say, you, you, you have a lot of traffic in the mornings with the school being there, and I would hope that would be some type of consideration or condition that may have been placed, but, but that's not, that's not their issue, that's, that's a city issue.
If I could just, just speak for a moment to this? We had put together a, a route from the port to the facility, and within that, I think we could, we could create an exact route that, that we would present to any of the deliveries coming to and from with regard to the school, and, and maybe trying to avoid that area to make sure there is no interaction, maybe in the A M. time.
Again, just for the city, I don't, the only, the only on-ramp to going south is off of High Street, I thought. From that location, it's off of High Street, right there, down the street from Norcom, and you have, you have walkers through that area, so that's, that's why I said that's a city, that's a city issue, that I hope we will take into account as far as how that traffic is going to be in the morning. Nothing against the project, it's just I think that it needs to be some, something regulated there for safety purposes.
Go ahead, Chuck, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker, Councilman Whitaker, that is an issue that we can address at the site plan review level with, I believe I'm going to defer to Mr. Miller without including a condition specifically addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, ma'am, we are, we are in need of a motion and a second, again, I wanted to make sure that we made the motion and the second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our public hearing items, we are now moving to the agenda item of City Managers Report, item twenty-four dash one-nine-five, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting Edward Rhine Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said amount in the F Y. twenty twenty-five Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to acquire automated external defibrillators.
Thank you, ma'am, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
The next item, item twenty-four dash one-nine-six, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting abandoned or derelict vessels program funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents for the Virginia Marine Resources Commission, and appropriating said amount in the F Y. twenty twenty-five Grants Fund for the removal of abandoned and derelict vessels from the city's waterways.
Thank you, ma'am, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, so first I want to thank Attorney Merrick for doing the work, the heavy lift here to get the grant funding. I assume we have a list, starting with the sailboat that's been sitting next to Crawford Parkway for months now, and I appreciate that he's helped us out by getting some funding to get that stuff taken care of.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, Assistant Attorney, City Attorney Merrick did a fantastic job of securing the, a great deal of more than just this money, but some help from the Marine Police, worked with the Portsmouth Police Department, he's, he's done the lion's share of trying to get these vehicles, these, these boats off our waterways. It is not an easy process, we have to go through the courts, we have to track down ownership, and we have a laundry list of boats to remove, not only in the Elizabeth River section, but also at City Park, is another area that we find these derelict boats, they are increasing by the boatload, no pun intended, and we're going to be working with the city manager on developing a more robust program to move more quickly and swiftly with some changes to our city code, as well as beefing up our entities that can help us move these things along quite quickly. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am, for that explanation. Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
We have come to the next item on our agenda, which is new business, item twenty-four dash one-nine-seven, boards and commissions, Madam Vice Mayor, do we have any boards and commissions this evening?
Mayor, we have no boards and commissions for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item twenty-four dash one-nine-eight, items submitted by council members. by council members. Item A, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance authorizing the reimbursement of certain legal fees and expenses for Officer Jeremy DeRocher pursuant to Section fifteen point two dash seventeen eleven of the Virginia Code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item B, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance authorizing the reimbursement of certain legal fees and expenses for Officer Vincent McLean pursuant to Section fifteen point two dash seventeen eleven of the Virginia Code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items to be considered by council at this time? Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to give a, a shout out to Olive Branch Little League who this past weekend, and now still, they are hosting the Little League State Tournament. The reason why that is significant is because we have never hosted it down here. So I wanted to give them a shout out, President Anthony Hines and his team. I was able to go out there and watch the senior girls play on Saturday night, I mean Saturday afternoon, actually. I was able to watch the entire game, they gave a, a great fight. They didn't come through that day, but the next day, they came through and won the game. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and let them know that I'm proud of them and also I'm proud of the organization for being able to host this major event for the city of Portsmouth, which brought in a lot of people from all across the state of, of Virginia. Also, I was out in the community today and I was talking to citizens and I spoke with somebody who stayed on Cavalier Boulevard and they asked that council, look into, if you're on the corner, if you're coming from Rapid Inn and Cavalier Boulevard, right at that corner, it turns back into Cavalier Boulevard, it turns back into Cavalier Boulevard going towards Greenwood. The issue that the citizen was having was that we don't have a, a sign that says one-way street right there and because of that, people are coming down the wrong side of the street, which is, of course, dangerous instead of going to the side. And if you, if you look from Rapid Inn, you can see that it's a curve to go into it and you could easily just go towards, go down the wrong side of Cavalier Boulevard. So he's asking that we put a sign there to let people know that it's a, a one-way street and I told him that I would address that tonight at council when I talked to him this morning. So I'm asking that we look into that. Also, in, in the, in the spirit of making sure that we're accountable for the money, monies that we provide to different organizations, different groups, I'm asking that, because we did get an email, but I'm asking that we ask the Next Gen Program who provides summer jobs to the city of Portsmouth to come in front of city council, because we gave them fifty-five thousand dollars for a program, for a summer jobs program for our youth. So I'm asking them that they come and present to city council about that program and the citizens that, I mean the children that is helping and to see, so that we as council can learn about that program itself. So I don't know if I have to ask for consensus, but I would like that to happen in the next meeting, if not the next meeting, the next two meetings, one of those meetings.
We'll just request that the manager look into providing that as a public work session.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that, that is all my comments.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I, can I?
Sir, you still have the floor.
My bad. Also, I wanna give a shout out to the city manager. I was, I was very on him particularly about our summer jobs program in which we had a hundred and thirty youth between ages of sixteen and nineteen to, to get an opportunity to work within the city. And after talking to parents, to our youth, it seems that that program has been executed perfectly. So I wanna give you a shout out for that and thank you for all the work that you put in to make that a success for our youth because they're happy. Some of them have gotten paid already because they started that week and, and they're, they're very happy. And just talking to the different staff around the city, they're saying how great it is to have that opportunity to have these kids in their office and it's been beneficial to them. So you, you executed that program perfectly and I wanna give you a big shout out for that.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Barnes. Yes, you were on me on that. But at the end of the day, it was the staff that actually did all that. I just passed those things along and asked for execution and challenged them to execute and they did. So yes, we did it as a team, but really, they did it. So I have to give all of them the credit for it.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, the first just pertains to the Bernard Griffin Park and the issue with the cameras. Mr. Tyrone Hines has emailed me a couple of times and I told him I would bring that to the attention and evidently the cameras have been removed and there's been some behavior issues there again since they've been removed. So I'm fulfilling my duty there. The other issue with council, just want to let you know, I had to leave earlier during the public work session because, as some of you know, Virginia Wesleyan University has partnered and received a grant with the Virginia Department of Forestry and you're gonna see some cars driving through Portsmouth. They're measuring the temperatures in the community. Portsmouth, from all indications from their research, has the second hottest temperatures in the Commonwealth. That should be no surprise because those issues relate heavily to poverty and so when you have a high presence of that, you, you would expect it because of building materials, road conditions, lack of trees, so forth. And so we were glad to be able to partner with them and they met today at New Bethel Baptist Church for the initial meeting and they will be driving through the neighborhoods sometime in July. Also, I wanna mention, Councilman Barnes reminded me when he brought up the traffic issue and this for the city manager. At the corner of where the Effingham YMCA is located, right there on Effingham Street, there's, the street that comes out of the, the tunnel traffic is a one-way street. But I've noticed on several occasions while I'm there at the Effingham Y, that cars are making a, a right-hand turn coming down that one-way street and I don't believe there's any signage there saying, "Do not enter." If it is, it's, it's very small, but it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. And so if we could put some attention to that, I intended to bring that up before Mr. Barnes reminded me when he said that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, couple of things. One, Cedar Lane. As many of you know, Cedar Lane was recently repaved. That's the good news. Bad news is the pavement is in some cases, three and four inches above the manhole covers. I noticed that some of them have been marked for some type of remediation. I think typically, from what I'm told, there, there are spacers that can go over those to raise the level. So when the pavement occurs, it's more of an even surface. So my question to staff is, what's gonna be done to correct that situation? If, Mr. Manager, you can get back with council so we can let citizens know. I'm sure some of you have had some complaints that travel down Cedar Lane. The other thing, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I saw the presentation on the street, honorable street designation. What I didn't see was any resolution to that. I don't know if there was a consensus, I couldn't tell from the video whether there was a consensus or not to move ahead with that. City manager shaking his head, so we, we either need to move ahead or, or call it dead and move on to something else. So Mayor, if you could ask for consensus on that issue?
I, I shall ask for a consensus. I just wanna make sure everyone's clear. Mr. Carter, did you wanna say anything to that?
Yes, I do.
I thought you did.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Councilman Moody, I was disappointed when I didn't see you at the meeting because that was kinda your item, you know, so.
Yep.
Dr. Russell did make a presentation, she made several suggestions of how we can handle that, made a call to action, but no action. So we're, we're ready to do whatever the council is, you know, ready for us to do. If, if there's a, a willingness to put something in place that solidifies how we actually do honorary street names, we already have a process that we presented. So if, all we need is action from this council to say, that's how we're gonna handle it.
Go ahead, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Just question for the city, is that a ordinance change?
You have the floor, Madam Attorney.
I don't, it's right now a policy.
Okay.
And so there would be no, you can put it in your ordinance if you wanted to, but it's a policy which makes it a little bit unique in terms of how he gets direction from you all. I will say that there was a one note, it's in the minutes, from Councilman Tilijas to a particular change that was anticipated. So it may have been that, the, the cost of it. And so I know there was definitely some direction, we thought there might have been a consensus, but there was some direction from council to continue developing it in certain areas. I think once that is in a draft form, we can bring it back to council either in a report back or we can put it on as a CMRs as the manager so desires. Okay, and then that'll result in action being taken up or down and they will know what to do.
All right, thank you.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move forward in that, in that, in that direction. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
The third thing, I received a briefing and I was out at that meeting because I'm still fighting bronchitis unfortunately, but I received a briefing that my colleagues received in a closed session. I didn't receive it in the closed session from our assessor. It involved Elizabeth Manor.
Point of order, may I have one point of order, please?
Yes, yeah, Madam Attorney. Sure, confirm.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna let that leave. I made a public comment that there, there was some developments there that in due time, Madam Attorney, that hopefully that will come forth publicly in due time. And I will say that it'll be like a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree turnaround. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three, three things. First, I want to applaud our city manager on the family coworker cookout that was held last Wednesday. I think it was well-received, a lot of attendance. I was there for a good portion of that time. Employees enjoyed it, I enjoyed it. Recommendation would be maybe to add two or three more lines so that people wouldn't have to wait so long for their food. But the music was great, it was a great atmosphere. Second point, wanted to be able to see, I don't know when we can have an update as a former liaison to the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, just wanna know where we are and if we could get an update on that, whether it be in public or a closed session. Yes, and then my third point, since everyone is making their requests for traffic studies right at the corridor, that includes our Innovation District, right at Elm Avenue and High Street. There is, I don't know where all this traffic is coming from, but sometimes you can wait at the light three turns before you can get through. And I think I spoke a couple of years ago with our city engineer about maybe getting a lead green light that's there. I think people are, are coming from the Naval Hospital or wherever they're coming from, but it is a ton of traffic and there's at least one accident with people trying to beat the light or trying to get through there before they have to wait three more lights before they can get through. So that's at the corridor of Elm Avenue and High Street.
Attorney Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Just quickly on the regional jail, I do wanna just give an update on the sheriff's lease for his use of the facility while we are in our due diligence period for closing. I wanna shout out my team, Deputy Miller, as well as the manager and Sheriff Moore, who all worked collaboratively with the board on the regional jail to effectuate this lease. I think we've got pretty much all signatures. It looks like it's full steam ahead, so we have moved along with that and he's covered, the city's covered and it's a fair lease respectively for, for the, for the city and all those involved. And like I said, we're in our due diligence period, we expect closure for the regional jail, hopefully, fingers crossed, September, August, September timeframe, and we'll continue to keep you updated.
Thank you both. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So two summers ago, we invited the GO Tech bus from Danville to bring the advanced manufacturing STEM program to Portsmouth for a week. Last summer, we invited them back. They brought the GO Tech bus and conducted a summer camp at the Children's Museum. This past school year, our schools have, have installed GO Tech classrooms in all three of our middle schools that, that teach the advanced manufacturing STEM curriculum now to our, to our middle school age kids. The GO Tech bus is coming back. Will be at the farmer's market this coming Saturday and at the Children's Museum all next week, again, doing summer camp. And so if you're a parent of a middle schooler and you wanna see what your kids are gonna have the opportunity to do during their career investigation classes upcoming year, come visit the GO Tech bus on Saturday. If you're not a parent of a middle schooler and you're an old guy like me, come on down anyway because it's pretty cool stuff that they're demonstrating robotics and welding and, and 3D printing and laser cutting, CAD, CAM, it's, it's pretty neat. So hope to see it at the farmer's market on Saturday morning at the GO Tech bus. Thank you.
Sir, also, could you please mention the, the MAC Conference that'll be coming?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the other thing that's going on concurrently with the GO Tech Summer Camp, the American Society of Naval Engineers is conducting their multi-agency craft conference in downtown Portsmouth next week. So multi-agency craft conference is code for Military Boat Show. So we're gonna have a bunch of military boats over in the wet slip next to the Renaissance Hotel. The summer camp, the, that the GO Tech group is teaching will The summer camp, the, that the GO Tech group is teaching, will take their kids down to visit the boats and get, even get boat rides on the military boats that are going to be here. Additionally, the American Society of Naval Engineers has a STEM program that's all about boat building, and they're also going to be running that summer camp concurrently with the multi-agency craft conference next week. They'll be hosted at our Children's Museum to run that summer camp, and those kids will not only get a chance to go to the Military Boat Show and see those boats, but we have plans in place to take them to various boat building and boat repair enterprises all around Portsmouth next week. So those 18 or so lucky kids are going to get the opportunity to design a boat, and then either next Thursday afternoon or next Friday morning, depending on the weather, the boats that they design during summer camp, they're going to put in the water at High Street Landing, and they're going to see if their boat design makes it across High Street Landing or not. And those are interesting engineering exercises. Some of them will make it, some of them might have to use the grant funding to retrieve derelict vessels from the bottom of the river there in High Street Landing, but we have that to look forward to next week with, with that summer camp. So thanks, thanks for that, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Attorney Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor, and then Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'd be remiss if I didn't encourage all those who are putting forth these wonderful programs for our students to make room for our special needs kids. We have a very robust support group with the school board, with the schools aides and people in the school system, and they're ready to assist, so let's make sure that we are all-inclusive. It's required by law, and our parents know that, so make space for our special needs children. Thank you.
Here, here. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
You already called.
Oh, when you, when you addressed that question? Before? Because you were still on the list, I'm sorry. That's why.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, you got me.
Okay, that's, that's why. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. One more item for the city manager's quite lengthy to-do list here. Photored at Town Point and Twin Pines, that was recently installed there, but at different times of the day, more so in heavy traffic in the evening, that light is only letting two, sometimes only three cars exit from Town Point to Twin Pines to make that left or right turn. So we, Town Point and Twin Pines. Obviously, I've noticed some people being caught and perhaps getting fined from the photored, which, you know, hopefully when we install photored, we, we're checking the sequence of the light. Some people told me that we purposely shortened the light span to create tickets, but I don't think so. But all those lights, in fact, there at Twin Pines, which are, there are numerous traffic signals, they, they need to, some of them out of sequence. I think traffic engineer probably needs to look, look at all of them in that short corridor. If you would add that to your list, Mr. Manager, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things I have, and then we'll move on with the agenda. First of all, to Councilman Barnes's in recognition of the Little League softball tournament. We also had the boys, this was the girls' junior and senior softball tournament at Olive Branch, which brought in 14 teams from around the state. But also this year, we had a Cavalier Manor, the Boys Little League State Championships. And that was the first time in the history that the Boys State Championship for Little League took place at Cavalier Manor. So kudos to Mr. White, to Coach Battle, and all the folks over there at Cavalier Manor Little League that made that happen. It was, it was a big effort. Delegate Cliff Hayes came out, so it was a great opportunity for us to showcase our young people and what they're doing. The other thing I want to recognize is our good friend, many of you know Ed Joyner? Ed Joyner, who is the entertainer of the world and century, who has done a lot of work with the NAACP and other organizations in the city of Portsmouth. I believe Ed is, has turned 90 years old. In addition to that, he has been in the entertainment industry for 64 years. So if you see Ed Joyner, wish him a happy birthday. I think his birthday was on July the 7th. He is a great guy and he is worthy of the recognition, so I wanted to recognize Ed for his birthday. Last thing I want to indicate is this past weekend, we did something enforcement that I thought was monumental, and we had an event called Shop, Shop the Block on High Street Festival. It was very well-attended. There were a lot of vendors who came out. We had two stages operating simultaneously. We had an entrepreneurial pitch contest where businesses were able to pitch their programs, and they were awarded $1,000. It was in partnership with our Economic Development Department and many others, Black Brand and so forth. It was a wonderful success. I know it was hot. I saw the manager out there with his team and family, and so also I think I saw Vice Mayor Lucas Burke out there. So it was one of the opportunities to showcase Portsmouth, to get people downtown selling, also buying, and just patronizing our businesses. I think it went over well, and it's something that we should look forward to into the future. That's all I have, folks. And Councilman Barnes, yep, you have the floor, and then City Manager Carter.
He can go before me. I'll go after him.
Sir, you have the floor.
All right, just a couple of things. One, just want to clarify something that was mentioned in passing, that we don't have a fire department that can handle hazardous material. I want to make sure that we are aware that, based on information that I've been told, we have this, we have, we are the lead in the South Side Regional Hazardous Material Team. That team consists of Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach, but our team, our fire department, is the lead for that team. So we do have the capability and, and the skill set to handle any hazardous material process that happens to come along. And this is something that I wouldn't normally do, but this really impressed me. There's a, a young lady, her name is, I lost her name. She's a graduate of Manor High School.
Stevie Gray.
Gary?
Stevie Gary.
Yes, Stephen Gary. Just graduated from West Point. First black female to graduate from West Point. I, and, you know, I, I normally don't do shout-outs, but that is worthy. That is historical, and I'm, she's, and from Portsmouth. So I'm, I'm, congratulations to her and her family, but I just felt we needed to say something about that momentous occasion.
That's worthy of appreciation.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor, and then we'll end up with the request from our city attorney.
Well, something else that I think is worthy of applause, on June 15th, myself, I do this every year, and Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke attended all of Portsmouth Public Schools' high school graduations. And on that day, we had over 830 kids who graduated high school from Manor, Norcombe, and Churchland. But also what was impressive is that 35 of, of our kids graduated with both a high school diploma and a college degree. So I, I think that's something worthy of a shout-out and worthy of applause because, you know, we always, we, we always come and talk about the, the bad things, what's going on in the community with our kids, but stuff like this need to be broadcast live and all the time because we really have some great things going on with our children in the city of Portsmouth. So I'm super proud of them. Mr. Edwards, I believe you had a child that graduated. I seen you at the graduation as well, so congratulations to that person. But this is definitely something that we need to push and, and show that we do have a lot of great things going on with our children in the city of Portsmouth.
Attorney Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you know, our office was tasked with the historic designation for Bernard Griffin Park. The, the division that is conducting that evaluation has asked, and we are in search of, so I'm putting this out to the community, for historic photographs of the park. We've done our own independent research at some of the public libraries and other public historical locations, but I know that there's a, there are many, many photo albums in the living rooms of our grandmothers and mothers' houses that may have historical photographs of the park, any sketches or other information showing the historical layout. We are asking that you send that to the city attorney's office so that we can support this application. So if you have them, please get in touch with our office and provide those records to us so we can support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
In line with what Attorney Graham Williams is saying, since you're airing it publicly, that Bernard Griffin Park is more familiarly known to some of the older African-American residents as the Mount Herman Park.
Thank you, thank you for that. And I made that note and didn't read it. That's in fact true. Mount Herman.
Thank you for clarification, sir. Now we're moving to pending items. Are there any pending, pending items, Mr. Carter?
Yes, so we only had a couple of things this time on a report back, included in your packet. Have a list for the next time, though, but this time, take a look at your packet, hopefully it has everything in it that you need for this report back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next item on the agenda is public's, non-agenda speakers, item 24-200. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker for this evening will be Mr. Sherman Tyler. Mr. Tyler, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Sherman Tyler, Parker Avenue. I'd like to apologize for my silence, because I tell you, I, I get shots once a month and miss my shot Monday, and I'm paying for it now, but I'm going to get it tomorrow. It could be out, it's killing me. But I, I would like to say a few things. My next-door neighbor, maybe four houses down, he's a retired chief MA, Master-at-Arms, good cat. He, he came in our neighborhood and just took off doing good deeds. The other night, he got robbed at gunpoint with individual, pointing a pistol, and his wife, and she's nine months pregnant. And I got the call about 10:30, and I said, and I went out to his house, and he's, and I said, "Well, you called cops yet?" He said, "Not." Fooling with them people, man. The folk, and look, they ain't killed me, they ain't killed my wife. This is my first child, and God blessed me to, you know, not, not my wife to get shot, so man, I'm not going to mess with them. Two weeks ago, a young lady on the next street over has a son like me, he's artistic, he's artistic, special needs. My son is 27, artistic, non-verbal, and we kind of talked because my son is artistic and her son is too. And she was walking to the Elm Avenue store and got robbed, you know, with her artistic son with her. You know, I, I, you know, I just feel like, I really feel like that, and I'm just going to say this, besides Vernon Tillich and Masaius Hughley, I just feel like this dies let us down. Y'all waited too late to do something. It's too, this stuff started, started 2020, and y'all just now, 2024, putting a board together, you know? And it's just crazy. And I'm going to say this here, I feel like that we wasted so much time with this petty politics, bringing in these city managers, robbing us blind, giving these cats all this money, and I sure ain't got, ain't got basketball hoops in the projects. We don't pay four city managers all this money for what? What have L1 did? Nothing, because our kids are still dying. I've been trying to get a sit-down with Mr. Carter right here since the middle of April. No call back, no nothing. Got one call back the end of June after me trying to get this man in the beginning of April. And it's crazy. But I'm going to say this here, bringing outside people to work with our chief is crazy because y'all never tried him. Get with him, find out what he think, find out what he can do. The man is smart, the man got a plan, but y'all want to always go outside to do something. Use what we got, go to sit chief down and let chief talk, let him tell you what he need to stop the crime. Y'all not doing that. Bringing an outside person is not going to work. You got guy like this guy in the back, big homeless, use him. He out there with them guys. He, he know all of them. Use Eugene. He's out there with them guys. Y'all ain't out there with them. You bring somebody else from the outside, they're not going to receive them. These guys out there with glue to the street. I see this guy at my niece, oh, when my niece got killed, he was out there, you know, talking to my sister-in-law, loving on her, getting involved. Y'all got the help right in front of y'all face, and you won't use it. You better go out and pay all this money for this nonsense, you know? But our kids still dying. And y'all smirking like this is a game and my niece is dead. My brother, daughter will never come back to this earth no more. She's gone. 29 years old, shot down dead like a dog for nothing, leaving her mama house. You know? Get with that chief. Forget all this other mess y'all, y'all try to come up with. Get with that chief. Sit him down. Chief, what do you need to stop this killing? Chief, what do you need? Because we ain't cops. We done tried it always for four years, it ain't working, because a body's still piling up. You know, and y'all, y'all did, y'all let, y'all let us down. Man, y'all was fussing about this person and that city manager and who you like, all this clique and ismschisms, and y'all left the people out that's important, people that vote for y'all. You left us out. And now it's, it's election time now. Now we want to hurry up and do, no, it's too late, because we got death on our book that we ain't even solved yet. My niece's death ain't nothing been said about nothing. And it's sad, man. And y'all, I mean, y'all responsible, the blood is on y'all hands.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Galdalde Jutrowski. Mr. Jutrowski, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, I had availed myself of the opportunity to view the work session from the comfort of my home this evening, and unfortunately, I didn't get a, a bi-weekly double this time. When I did it last time, I had enough left over. There's enough time with you going into closed session for me to hot-foot it here and not miss anything, but I lost the last part of the work session today. So I, I go back to what I've been preaching from this pulpit. Reinstate the ability to participate electronically. But the reason that I came electronically. But the reason that I came tonight to, to address you was to offer my perspective that the Cities United program looked like something that would have a benefit for Portsmouth. I got the impression from the way the last work session ended up that it was going to be discounted. So something happened in that thirty-minute gap that made it come out the other way, and I'm pleased to see it. Uh, I'm, I'm a sucker for a soft sell, which is what you had two weeks ago. The presenter didn't make any hyperbolic claims. Um, he just laid out facts. He talked about things that made good sense to me and seemed like a very workable approach to dealing with problems that are not only ours, but that we're seeing across the country. And it sounded like a very flexible approach so that they were not going to usurp what we were doing here, but trying to complement it. And bringing the, the experiences from across the country that they have tapped into in the course of operating this program. Crime is not a single city problem. We may be symptomatic to a greater degree than some of our neighbors, but, uh, it's, it's a, an up and down sort of phenomenon. And Portsmouth has been a league leader in a league that we don't really want to play in. But it shifts. The ground shifts, and hotspots spring up elsewhere. And then our problems are yesterday's news. But it's a pervasive problem. It's a national problem. And it's good that you are going to seek assistance in integrating the experiences, the lessons learned from across the country in trying to find a way through this that benefits us all. So I thank you for turning the corner on that, turning the right corner on that and moving toward, uh, cooperation with Cities United. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds? Sir, you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Leon Hammonds, Bowie Court. Uh, I guess somebody must have read my mind about, um, the Madison Ward Park, because it is finally started to do something out there. It's been sitting out there with, uh, grass growing up by as high as this, this here. They finally trying to, uh, put the basketball court up, paving that after about two and a half months, maybe three months. Finally, I'm glad to see that. Gift cards. I'm back. Over twenty-four hundred gift cards still sitting, as far as I know. Now, I don't understand, what is the plan for distribution? The people of Portsmouth needs to know. They need to be told and given the gift cards out. There's no such thing as a hundred dollar gift cards anymore. They break around sixty, the hundred dollar gift card break around sixty-five dollars. And the five hundred dollar gift cards, for whatever reason they bought them, is less. Now that's a money wasted that the government gave to us for a purpose for our citizens. Our citizens deserve more than that. Now, we got people that, we got the big placards, wanna be elected. I've never seen them here. One person I know wanna be elected for the City Council. And none of them, others I don't know. And then some of y'all wanna be re-elected. That question should be asked. I know you got more important things, but still, that's money from the citizens of Portsmouth that is supposed to have been for Portsmouth, not to be just sit there on somebody's desk or in the drawer. See? And, and, and it doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't. And it looks like no one cares, because if it cared, I think it would be done. That's all you got to do is care. Now, last, last, uh, uh, meeting I was here, you know, due for a raise next year. But people, even though the state give you that, but you still have to really care. Should always say, well, do I really deserve it? Am I doing what I supposed to be doing for my citizens? I don't want nobody sitting up in front of me and not caring. I don't know how big the problem is or how small the problem is. We got a problem. Everybody got a problem. So really, you know, we need to help solve each problem, but you don't just let a problem go from manager to manager to manager to manager. See, that problem right there is just a, it's like a sore. Nobody cares. I mean, they don't pull a Band-Aid on it. So, I thank you. But I'll be back next time if we, if we haven't got a game plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. And Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um, the, the gift cards, you, I know you've been speaking about them for a couple of weeks. I think it's important that we talk about how we even got to the gift cards, um, situation. Um, that, that original program as it pertains to the gift cards was not supposed to be gift cards. Um, Council actually voted to provide, um, direct payments, um, to the citizens of Portsmouth. Um, and those direct payments were supposed to come in two, um, ways. One, direct payment was supposed, was supposed to go to the Alice population, which is the, the Alice population is those citizens who are just at the cuffs of being able to not get benefits from social service, that, you know, the, the different things that social service provide for them. And they were supposed to get monthly checks, um, for about two years. Then the citizens who were on, um, benefits, they were supposed to get a one-time payment, because if you give them a monthly fee, that counts as income. Therefore, they would have to, they would probably have to forfeit their benefits. The problem that happened is that that program was executed wrongly, and, and it was a bunch of gift cards instead of how Council actually voted for what that program was supposed to be, um, with the, with the Opera funds, which is why, um, in essence, certain people, um, were high on the, the list of letting go because the program was, was executed, uh, wrongly. So that's how we got to the gift cards. Uh, from my understanding, we should be hearing in a, in a, in a couple of weeks what's going on. And it is concerning because, um, they're losing value, um, and that means we're losing plenty of money every time they, that they lose value. Um, and again, it wasn't even supposed to be gift cards in the first place. Um, myself and Councilman Woodaker tried to, um, to get, uh, an audit done in two thousand and, um, twenty, twenty-two. Um, and we voted to do an audit to include that, um, but in twenty-twenty-three, it was reversed. Um, but I, I think it's important that we know how we even got to, to gift cards, because gift cards wasn't even supposed to be a thing. It was supposed to be totally different from that. And despite the vote from Council, it was done a whole different way, in which I don't know any job that, um, you can, a- a- and, and this in the Council form is, is done by the majority, but I don't know any job where the boss can tell you to do something, you can do what you want. And that's kind of what happened in that situation. Um, also, to the city manager, um, I wanna make sure that we're, um, complying with the Opera funds as far as spending them on what we're supposed to spend on by the time that we're supposed to spend them on. So I would like for us to get a report back regarding that, because, um, some of the projects that I know that we voted on to do with those Opera proj- projects haven't been started or haven't been done. So I wanna make sure that we've, we've done those, we've done that, and we're starting to work on those things. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Woody. Sir, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I got a feeling Mr. Hammonds probably knows about the history of the cards. I, I think what he's wanting to know, uh, is the status of the cards and who's gonna end up with them. And, uh, I just inquired of the manager, the status of the cards and the amount of the cards, uh, all of that's gonna be contained in the turnover audit that, uh, I think we're supposed to get some results from by the end of July. Uh, from there, I don't think the audit will cover this, but, uh, I don't know about my colleagues, but we need a plan on how to get out of the gift card business. Uh, quite frankly, I'm tired of hearing about gift cards. Uh, what wasn't, you're right, Councilman Barnes, we shouldn't have done the gift cards. But also, I didn't support doling out, uh, checks either, although that would have probably been easier to account for. But, uh, the money should have been spent for the good of the, the whole city. But we're not there, so maybe, uh, if my colleagues are in agreement, uh, maybe, uh, the manager can come back with a plan and, and open the conversation on how we, uh, distribute the gift cards from this point on.
Do we even have to, to wait to hear, um, the, what comes from the turnover? Can we start a plan now? Um, you come back to, come back to us with something the next meet? Because, eh, like you said, they're losing, they're losing value every, every day. By the time we might get a plan, it might be zero dollars up there.
Manager Carter, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would respectfully ask that we wait, uh, let the audit process happen, uh, simply because I have no idea about the history of this. I have no idea where it was supposed to go, how it was supposed to han- be handled, whether it was handled right, whether it was handled wrong. I have no idea. And I don't really wanna get involved in it until I know what those things are. Now, if you guys have something that you, you know, would prefer me to do in the meantime, absolutely, I'd do it. But if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask that you wait and let that audit complete the process. It's only a, a few more weeks here, and, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a long time. I don't know that a few more weeks is gonna make or break that process for us. So I'm, I'm gonna respectfully ask that we let that play out.
I'm, I'm totally okay with that, um, Mayor. Um, I just know that whatever we do, it has to be in a compliance, in compliance with the Opera standards.
Thank you, sirs. Our next speaker, Mr. Darrell Redman. Mr. Redman, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Darrell Redman, little forty, thirty-five storeway lane. I'm here today to talk about crime. And first off, I wanna piggyback off what was just going on. You know how y'all sit on the dais and disgusted of how crime is in the community? I'm disgusted at that situation that just happened here, because it's people dying. I've been doing this, and I'm glad that we finally brought Cities United on. But I came in front of you guys two years ago when I was awarded on a national level for, for the same training from Cities United. Anthony Smith, Sanista, um, S- S- Sunitia White, Latoya Del. I've been dealing with these people for three years, coming to y'all, telling y'all the solution to the problem, but nobody listens. We had a meeting with the mayor a couple of years ago when they came in. They were pulling, and some of the city manager pulled aside. None of this stuff happened. So we acting like, we come in here now like we got a plan or something that's going on, but it's been in front of you. And this thing has been consistently happening. We got a crime commission that other commissions meet every single month. The crime commission ain't met yet. But you say that this is your number one priority in the city. I'm a taxpayer inside this city. I pay attention to what's going on. What's a priority? You wanna make a priority. I get a call two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning with these people dying. I'm still moving these families. Thank you, Mr. Hugo. We just had a meeting. Mr. Hugo was the only one that came through and showed up and showed out. But making those calls to get those families in. Mr. Hugo made the call to you, Mr. Carter, and I was waiting for you to call me that you were supposed to call me. Oh, louder and louder, you never called me. But it's the thing that we talk about when we in these positions. So I feel as though if I'm an advocate for the city and we speak with certain conversations, you come in, we're gonna have conversations to see, can we get to the root cause of it? There's a question that was proposed to me by a kid, and the kid asked me, if we was to go out to eat for the first time, would you allow me to order your food? I don't even know your appetite, but I'm making your meal. And that's what is happening here. Not talking to these shooters, pill poppers, not talking to them. We have these conversations. These kids want the same thing that you want. It's environments, it's trauma, it's different components. I live in Long Point. I work down here. I got, um, uh, uh, invitation in my mailbox about the STEM and STEAM program, but I'm in London Oaks, Dale's Home and stuff, every single day. I never seen this, those opportunities out there. So are we gonna present opportunities, or are we gonna be opportunists? Because that's what's happening. We taking advantage of systems with words that, you know how we, people go to school and get a degree? I got a degree in this criminal. I got a degree in violence interruption. The same people that we just sent Chief Jenkins to Chicago and see, I dealt with those people. I've been trained by those same people. But as you say, when we have what's in front of us, do we use it? When Mr. Anthony and them, Mrs. Nithia come here, the first name they gonna tell you is Darrell Redd, because I've been with them. I dealt with them. Man, Vernon, me, you had a conversation about violence interrupters before you even ran. And I gave you about what violence interrupters were, credible measures. We was talking about this. When he first said something to the mayor, he pulled it up. It's, it was in some city that when a mayor first came in, the first person she hired was a violence interrupter, because you have to understand the temperature of your community. If you wanna do business, how you gonna do business with crime then? It's a domino effect. It is an ecosystem that is gonna be taught by them, but I understand the ecosystem too. I know what the ecosystem consists of. What's happening is people going in different lanes, creating accidents. And that's what the ecosystem is gonna teach you. If you don't stay in your lane, it's gonna be an accident. We understand everybody can't go inside those communities and do it. We not asking you to do that. But we asking you to support the initiative that's inside the communities that work. London Oaks, before you came, and a lot of them know London Oaks is one of the number one cities creating crime in, in the city. We sustained eighteen months in that city with no, in that community with no shootings, and that's when we was awarded on a national level by the same organization, Cities United, just coming here. Eighteen months from being trained and understanding what happens in order to reduce crime. Eighteen months from being trained and understanding what happens in order to reduce crime. So we can go get the data, we can go get the experts, I can quote it just as well as you can quote it. The University of Chicago, Chico, Marcus that runs that, they my guys, I talk to them consistently. I still consult with them now on evidence-based practices that they using in Chicago. L.A., Baltimore, and these cities, I deal with these people personally. But because I don't look the pot and wet the tap, you don't want to accept the services. I do this every single day of my life. And I'm devoted to it. Thank y'all.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cedric Crado. Mr. Crado, sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Our new city manager. I pray to God blesses you with a long tenure here. Stay encouraged. That being said, chicanery. What about to the crime commission? Chicanery. What about the witness protection funding that we gave to the Commonwealth Fraternity? Chicanery. Does anybody know the, how the funding is being given out or distributed? Because again, I went to a case where a young man's address was given out. And the assailant was found not guilty. So again, chicanery. Y'all put that person at jeopardy. And it's sad because it could have been you guys. But anyway. What about the Portsmouth redevelopment housing area? I hear a lot of people up here say they from here and I'm from there. But Dale's Home is horrible. I have several families out there that, that's all they hear is shooting. And I don't want to get outraged, I want to get hollering. Because I've heard citizens tell me, hey, you need to calm down. But what about those families that are living in these trifid areas? In the Portsmouth redevelopment housing? Portsmouth. Portsmouth redevelopment. Portsmouth consists of fifty-one percent African-Americans. Thirty-three percent of that population didn't vote in the last election. Twenty-three percent of that population is living below the poverty line and you worried about crime. It's coming, people. It's coming. And it's not gonna stop. I believe that this dais is gonna be different in November. I really believe that. But does it, will it change anything? I heard many African-American leaders say economics is a problem. Where the jobs? You didn't brought no jobs in here. We talk it, but we don't walk it. There's a ten-year-old child whose murder is still unsolved. Good God, am I. Chicanery. This is crazy. I have a list, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that this night because I don't want to take up too much of y'all time. But it's, that list has grown tremendously, Mr. Moody, from the time I met you at that meeting with those families when you was running for council again. The list has gotten longer. And to be honest with you, Mr. Carter, I had to start making the pictures because I couldn't keep up with the murders. I'm not gonna lie to you. It's unfortunate. Chicanery. I remember that word spoken to me by one of these late, great members, council, who is no longer here, who didn't last. Chicanery. And I looked that word up. And it's a powerful word for a leader to use against another citizen. But he's no longer here. Like a lot of you guys would not, no longer be here sooner than later. But I'm asking you guys to look into not only your hearts and your minds, but look into these communities. Because you can walk it, you can talk it. But if that was your ten-year-old child playing the game, looking out the window just to see something and lose his life, what would you do? I know what I would do. Unseen tears wouldn't exist. I'm telling you to your face. If my ten-year-old child got killed, it ain't no telling what I would do. I served in the United States Army. I retired, many don't know. Yeah, I was in public schools and I unfortunately was prosecuted for crime. And I paid my dues, I got my rights back. And I'm only saying that for the public to hear. Because this dais don't believe in the people. I'm a witness to that. So again, be careful who you look down on. Because when you get off here, you gotta look them in the face. And I spoke to a council member last, the other night. But anyway, you guys just, voters, come to the poll November the eighth. You can change this situation. If they can't, you can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Dr. William Dodson. Dr. Dodson, you decline to speak, sir? Okay? That was our last speaker for the evening. If there is no more business to conduct, then this meeting is adjourned. Please drive safe. Good night.